All right, thank you very much for indulging that break. It has been a long evening. We are going to come back in with policies for first reading and going to pass that off to Mr. Bullier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I start, I do want to publicly thank Ms. Nichols. She has been the head of the Policy Committee, I think, for 16 years. It's a lot of service and it's been appreciated. So I just did want, I wanted to say thanks. And she's also been very generous with information since I started taking over this. So I do appreciate it. Having said that, I did want to do things a little bit differently tonight. I emailed the board in anticipation of the policies for first reading, asking board members to single out any policies that they wanted to discuss further. Without hearing back from any board members, I would ask for a motion to pass the policies for first reading en masse. A reminder, these are only for information. They will be back on for second reading.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the policies as presented.
Or is there a second? Do you have people online?
I second the motion, Jeanette Nichols.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Wortman?
Aye.
Mr. Bullier?
Aye.
Ms. Estep?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Ravanbark?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda for this evening is New Hanover County Schools' data report. Would Dr. Smith please join us at the podium? You have to distract it that way.
So, good evening, and thank you again for the opportunity to share information with you in regards to our schools, our tremendous schools that we have in our district. This evening, I'd like to share with you a data report. Primarily, this data will represent our outcomes, our end-of-grade and our end-of-course outcomes from the 2018-2019 school year. We do also have included in the dataset limited outcomes from the 2019-2020 school year, those data outcomes that were available to us in terms of fall EOC testing, and then also our graduation rate, as well as our unofficial ACT outcomes for our student. And then finally, we'll share with you some data that has been rerostered. We have rerostered database upon available student scores to represent the students who are currently in our schools across the district. Now, of course, that is not available for high schools because of how the data is reported, but we do have some limited data for our elementary school, and then we have data for our sixth and seventh and eighth graders and our middle school. This is a team approach, and so I'm excited this evening to have come to the podium with me Dr. Elizabeth Murray. She will be overviewing for you the accountability model. I think it's very important that you understand the model under which North Carolina operates, and of course, our school system as well. And then also have with me Dr. Jackie Jethro, and she will be talking specifically about elementary school data. And then we have Mr. Al O'Brien, who will be speaking in regards to our secondary school data, so our middle schools and our high schools. And then we also have with us Ms. Shamika Shuford, who is our Director of Career and Technical Education, and she'll be speaking specifically around those outcomes related to our students who are enrolled in our career and technical education programs. So without further delay, I'll have Ms., excuse me, Dr. Murray come forward and share with you information in regards to the accountability model.
Good evening.
Turn it back off again. This evening, we will be sharing some accountability data. Again, as Dr. Smith said, it is primarily from the 1819 school year. We know that in North Carolina, our schools were shuttered on March 13th, and we received federal and state waivers for our accountability data. So we did not have end-of-grade and end-of-course exams at the end of the 1920 school year. So a lot of what will be shared this evening really is around what we have been doing in our schools based on the 1819 data. However, we didn't get an opportunity to evaluate those changes and efforts. But we do have limited data, and the four-year cohort graduation rate is one thing that was published, and we have some good news around that. And with that, I will just kind of review the accountability model for North Carolina. For those of us that have been in North Carolina for quite some time, we used to reference the No Child Left Behind model, which was a national model. And with the reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, we moved to the Every Student Succeeds Act. And so in North Carolina, we have two basic parts that comprise our accountability model. The first part is academic achievement, and those are the results from our end-of-grade and of-course tests and other indicators of college and career readiness, such as ACT, graduation rate, math course rigor, those kinds of things. And that accounts for 80% of a school's performance grade. The other 20% is academic growth, and it's important that we focus on that 20%. Our schools often are labeled and recognized for the letter grade they receive, and a large part of that is based on academic achievement. So we're not always aware of all the growth that students are making in our schools and how much that really accounts for student progress. So the accountability measures, you'll hear some of these terms from my colleagues tonight. So just to review, the performance composite are the number of students or the number of test scores that were proficient. In North Carolina, we use a four-level proficiency academic achievement levels. That's a little different from the past. We used to have levels one through five, and now we have level five, level four, level three, which is considered proficient in North Carolina. And then the lower tier now is just considered not proficient. So we've moved away from the level one, level two, to not proficient, level three proficient, levels four and five are career and college ready. And then the other piece again is growth, and growth is just strictly an indication of how students have progressed throughout the year. We want to ensure that all students are growing. What we know is that if students are not proficient, they have to grow to reach that proficiency marker. And when students are proficient, they also need to show growth on their end-of-grade test, end-of-course test, and things like that. Sometimes we can get lost in the fact that students are proficient, and a lot of times they're not going to move backwards to being not proficient. So it's that growth piece again that is so important that we're looking at. And so schools receive a growth measure or a status of met, not met, or exceeds growth. And so you'll hear some information about that. The components in elementary and middle school are exactly the same. It's our end-of-grade tests. In North Carolina, we only test science in grades five and eight. And we also have a measure of our English learner student's progress. The goal is for them to progress through the program and exit within four years. So that is a piece of our academic accountability model. And that again, accounts for 80%. And then the other 20% is the growth. High school actually has some additional components with the career and college readiness indicators. So we do have our academic achievement portion with our EOC assessments, which are English Two, Biology, North Carolina Math One, and North Carolina Math Three. And then our other indicators are of course our graduation rate, the percentage of 12th grade students who passed NC Math Three, the percentage of students who are meeting the minimum entrance requirements for the UNC system of colleges and universities. And then our work keys assessment is an example of our career readiness, and we have some great information to share about that tonight. And again, the EL progress, hoping that students are progressing towards exiting in four years. And so with that, Dr. Smith's going to share some highlights and some historical data.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. And so I think it's important to highlight within the district, again, our graduation rate, which is 88.2%, and that overall, two-thirds of our junior met the ACT entrance exam score of 17%, excuse me, of score of 17. And at a later point, we want to bring you some additional information to actually break down that ACT score into subgroup information, because we think it's important to understand what the average is, but it's also even more important to understand how different subgroups within our district are performing. And then another important highlight is just simply the number of industry credentials that have been earned by our students. We saw an increase from 3,046 to 4,056 in the course of one year. And so with our historical data, as you know, New Hanover County Schools is one of the, or is the 12th largest district within the state of North Carolina. And we are a member of the Large District Consortium, and so we often benchmark our performance against those large 12 districts. And we consistently perform in the top 25% of schools across North Carolina. We believe it's important to not only benchmark ourselves against ourselves, but we also benchmark ourselves against the standard, which is the state, but we also benchmark ourselves against others. We want to make sure that our students are competitive and that our teachers are providing our students with the quality of instruction that allows them to not only meet the expectations in terms of performance set forth by the state, but also in exceeding them. And so this is just a little bit of this data, and so you can see very clearly where New Hanover County Schools falls out in terms of the, essentially, the end-of-course exams are average in terms of career completion rate. And so consistently, we fall typically in the top five of those 12 large districts in terms of these particular datasets. And then also, if you take a look at our performance composite, New Hanover County Schools consistently outperforms the state when looking at our overall composite related to end-of-grade and end-of-course test. And so even as we have seen changes in the standards and shifts in the expectations, New Hanover County Schools consistently outperforms the expectation of the, of meeting, or excuse me, exceeding the average performance within the state. And then here, we're looking at the career and college readiness indicators, and we exceed all of those, again, except for in the math course rigor. And if I'm not correct, there was a change in how this was assessed before. Before, it was the percent of students who were passing Math Three, and now it's been shifted to the percent of 12th grade students who are passing Math Three or who have passed Math Three. But again, our scores, our outcomes are very similar to that of the state in terms of that performance, but we do exceed all others in terms of our outcomes. And then I think it's very important to note, if you see back in 2013, New Hanover County Schools' graduation rate was actually below that of the state average. And then in 2018, 2019, we exceeded the state average, and then we were very excited to find that we continue to exceed the state average even last year, given all the challenges that were presented by the emergency school closure. And so at this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Jethro to speak in regards to our elementary schools' data.
Thank you. Passing the magic.
Magic. Good evening again, everyone. I'm going to share about three slides with you with reference to the elementary data, because as Dr. Murray said earlier, these are really the three areas for elementary schools in terms of the North Carolina accountability components. So our achievement and our growth comes from these three areas. And so we can see from this point in time, from this assessment year, that New Hanover County Schools was above the state average in all three areas. And what I would really say, what I would highlight on this slide, is this very definitely does drive our work. So from this point in time, with reference to reading, we really began the adoption of our high-quality ELA curriculum for all students, for all schools. And so since this point in time, 2018, 2019, we've had two academic years to phase that in through K2 and then 3.5 for reading and for writing and for phonics instruction. The thing that I would mention and I would highlight about math is that this did reflect a year where the math EOG was renormed. So there were different questions, there were actually fewer questions, but also there was the added element of less time, the questions were more open-ended. And so we still performed very well compared to the state on the math assessment in this way. And then we also typically do very well in science. Dr. Faust and I were having this conversation the other day, and really what I found with the principals and the teachers in elementary school is that the science test is based on a more finite amount of information, and we have gotten very good within our own schools and our own sites, really doing that vertical planning. So we know what those standards are for the fifth-grade science end-of-grade test, and even within our schools, the fifth-grade teachers are able to support kindergarten through fourth grade in those priority standards that help the children build their knowledge as they build up to the fifth grade. This slide indicates our growth status, as Dr. Murray said, which is so very important. And I will just sort of start and go through. For the red, so for the did not meet, this really shows five schools in terms of elementary. I think from this year, there were nine New Hanover County Schools that did not meet expected growth, and five of those were elementary schools. And then the green section for met, there are 21 schools in the district that met expected growth, and 14 of those were elementary. And then to the blue for exceeded, we had five elementary schools that exceeded growth, and we have those listed for you there. And as Dr. Murray says, when we really think about that growth piece, the students having access to the same standards and the same test, but really the difference, the impact that the year of instruction makes with that teacher and with that school. And then finally, the final slide that I have for you tonight shows it in terms of school performance grades. And so I will just mention, for the sake of time and the presentation, the bookends. So we do have one elementary school that has a school performance grade of an F, and that is Freeman Elementary. And what I would say about Freeman and our work with them is that from this data point, they did meet growth in ELA. They exceeded growth in both math and science from this year, and they met or exceeded growth in all of their subgroups. So this does show the performance grade of an F, but very, very much headed in the right direction. And then to the other bookend, the A schools, we did have three elementary schools that earned a school performance grade of an A, Ogden, Parsley, and Wrightsville Beach. And now we'll pass the torch.
I think it's important to note on this particular slide that we outperformed the state in all secondary areas. I also think it's noteworthy to mention that in 2018, we missed about 20 days of school due to a major hurricane. So that speaks to the quality of instruction that our teachers have provided and the leadership that our principals have provided as well. So this data shows that with our secondary schools, that we outperformed the state in all areas. I would call your attention to a couple of areas here. First would be biology. Biology has historically been a strong suit for our district, and we typically achieve growth in biology. We still report out on biology, but biology does not count in the growth factor anymore for our high schools. So that hurt us a little bit because we have been so strong there recently, but we do still, it does still get reported out, but it does not count in growth. The other areas that I would point out would be North Carolina Math One on the right-hand side. That is our nine through 12 data, but we also have quite a few students that take Math One as an eighth grader. And our proficiency with our eighth-grade students last year was exceeded 95%. I think it was 98.5. So our Math One kids at the middle school level did very well, and those proficiency rates were high. They're actually factored into the Math Six through Eight, but they're not factored into the high school scores, but definitely worthy of noting. And then finally, I would end on North Carolina Math Three. This was the first time that we've had the opportunity to test with North Carolina Math Three, so it was our first-year testing. And we do have some 1920 data that shows that we have already increased those scores, I think up to almost a 63, 64% there. So we did see an increase in 1920 on our halftime data there. So we definitely had some gains in a very short period of time in one semester. Again, this slide, much like Dr. Jethro described, indicates just the schools that met in green, or the percentage of schools that met in green, the percentage of schools that exceeded, and then the schools that did not meet growth. So we had five schools that did not make their growth, we had two that exceeded, and then I think we had nine that actually met their growth. And our two schools that exceeded growth were Murray Middle and CTEC High School. This particular slide just shows our secondary schools and their school performance grade at the secondary level. We did not have any F schools, and the vast majority of our schools were in the B to C range. We did have some schools in the A range as well, and only one D school. And our two schools earning A were Isaac Bear and Wex. As we go forward, now this is our 1920 data, so we were fortunate enough to get some data back for the high schools because we are on the block schedule, so we did get some what we would call halftime data. And I think it's important, and Dr. Smith kind of pointed this out, when we look at this data, you should focus on the average, but you should also focus on the subgroups, because the average shows that overall, we've done a good job, but if you look at the subgroups, it will indicate that we still have work to do. And this is our four-year cohort graduation rate. You can see that in the all group, we are at 88.2, again, our highest level ever, but if you look across this bar graph, you can see that we still have some opportunities for growth. And if we can move these subgroups, then we're going to move our graduation rate even higher. And this will play out even a little bit more in the next couple of slides. So these are our unofficial ACT results. We give the ACT to all of our 11th-grade students. And again, if you look only at the average, we're at 67%, a little bit better, but if you look across the bar graph, you can see that we have opportunities that are in front of us for improvement here. So that's something that we want to make sure that we focus on, is not just the average, but also the subgroups, because we need to move those forward as well. And these are our 1920 fall EOC results. Again, we saw gains in the all category, but as you move across this particular table, you can see that we do have, again, gaps with our subgroups, and we have opportunities to improve here. As you look at this data, if we would just take a look at English Two, it's really a fraction there. The first number are the number of students that scored proficient, and the second number is really the denominator, how many students actually took the test. So just some information so that you can read through that. But again, we have opportunities here to move forward. If we can raise all of our subgroups, then that's going to help us to raise that all category as well. Our AP results, so we had almost 70% of our students that took AP courses that actually earned a three-year higher, which would earn them college credit in a UNC system school and also other schools as well. And this is our SAT data for the district. The red line indicates the national average, the green line is the state average, and the blue line is the New Hanover County School average. And it's important to note here that while the national average fell, I think it was nine points, the state average fell two points, we saw an increase of 11 points. So we see that as a positive as well. And I think that wraps up my data piece, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Shamika Shuford, our Director of CTE, to take over.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This particular slide reflects proficiency data for career and technical education for fall of 2019. As you can see, our proficiency was 82.56%. We consistently outperform our counterparts in the southeast region as well as the state. Last year, our proficiency was 81, right around 81%, and at the state and regional level, it was 76%. Industry credentials are a very important proof of learning in the career and technical education program. We have made a concerted effort within our district to increase not only the number of credentials earned, however, we've also worked to increase the number of credentials that we offer to students. Last year, students earned 4,056 credentials, and that was even with the impacts of COVID. In the previous year, those credentials were a little over 3,000. So as you can see, we have experienced significant growth, and we are working to continue to increase both the number of credentials earned and credential options for our students. At the bottom of the slide, you'll see some examples of credentials that we offer in our district.
Thank you to my team. I appreciate you greatly. What I'd like to share now with you is what we've done in terms of providing to schools as accurate a data picture as we could have. And so I've got two examples. So this is redistricted proficiency data. So the data you see on the screen represents the students who are currently at that school. Now, again, this data is very limited, especially for elementary schools, because the only prior score we had available was the third-grade ELA reading score and then the third-grade math score. But what it allowed us to do, and we chose Porter's Neck very intentionally, because of course, Porter's Neck is a brand-new school for us. of course, Porter's Neck is a brand-new school for us. So we are able to provide to that principal outcome data on the students who are currently enrolled at his school. And so, again, this is just simply a sample for you. And then we've done this also with our middle school. And so here, we've used previous EOG scores again so that we can give you outcome data for sixth graders in ELA in math, seventh graders in ELA in math, and eighth graders in ELA in math. And again, this school was chosen very intentionally because I believe they have about 300 different students than were with them, so about 300 additional students as a part of their population. So if we were using the previous data to determine our goals or to make plans, it would be much less accurate than this data, although we do understand that there is a gap year in terms of that. And so the report that you have in front of you, and I'll just hold up a copy of it, includes the sample data, the redistricted data for all of our schools in our district. And then it also includes the data reports that we had made available in 1819 as well. And so at this time, we are happy to answer any questions that you may have about this outcomes data.
I have a question. Sunset Park, so this may be for Dr. Jethro, exceeded, was one of the schools that exceeded growth. Is there any way to know if that was attributed to the year-round schedule?
I think often when we look at data, we want to see causation, but it's very difficult. What I would attribute to, you know, professionally, is just really the quality of instruction that is being delivered. You know, the principal of that school and the teachers of that school worked really hard to connect with their students. They worked to ensure that there is high-quality curriculum available to their students. They actually participated in our instructional rounds and are very receptive of feedback. And when you go into those classrooms, what you see students engaged in are really meaningful, sustaining tasks that require a certain level of cognitive demand that helps to ensure that those students grow. I would say that if it were simply, and nothing's simple in education, we know, but I think if we were looking for a causation, then that probably would be evident in every one of our year-round schools, and that is not the case.
Okay.
I would just add, in my conversations with those teachers, I even asked that very question, is getting off that year-round calendar going to hurt you because you've done so well? It's one of our schools that's really done a remarkable job over these past three, four years. And then they all said no, that they, you know, they think they can get their same job done, and I'm confident they can. That's a really good school, so thank you for all this information. I'm very impressed.
Yes.
So I would assume that there is a part two to this for the, for the subgroups?
So yes, there's quite a bit that we can do. You know, we surely could have made this a six-hour presentation, but we thought much, much better of it. So we would like to bring to you an update monthly, if we're able, in terms of breaking down the subgroups, and then also talking about the district's response to the data.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
That was very informative, and we look forward to follow-up discussion. Thank you to the entire team.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, Head Start. Go ahead and pass that to Mr. Bowyer as he makes his way to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, it's become custom for me to indulge your patients a bit longer. I did want to bring the board an update on our quality improvement plan, and we can start with that. As many of you know, due to some issues that we had at Johnson Pre-K, we had to develop a quality improvement plan. We did something very similar for the state. We passed our state exam with flying colors, and now we are in the process of implementing this plan, and we've been in the process of implementing this plan for a while with the federal government. On August 1st, I'm sorry, yeah, on August 1st, we requested an extension for that plan. That way, we could, you know, keep working through COVID to implement some of the changes that we had talked about. So I won't go all the way back to the beginning of this. I'll just focus on what we've done since we have implemented that extension. On 8/12, our director emailed Transportation and Health and Safety for training sessions and requirements to the principal. The trainings that we have implemented are directly related to the deficiencies that we were trying to correct. On 8/28, Human Resources posted health and aid positions. We updated ECE website to add Head Start language. Head Start service plans were updated to reflect the required health and safety training for safety practices. All staff followed appropriate practices to keep children safe during all activities, including releasing children to an authorized adult. Head Start service plans were updated to reflect the required vehicle operation safety, so no child is left behind at the classroom or in the vehicle at the end of the route. And the principal and director reviewed this quality improvement plan. Let's see, September 14th, 15th, health and safety training began. On 9:30, we've scheduled training for Johnson bus drivers and monitors, as well as the principal and director. We added links to documents for evidence of completion to the quality improvement plan. The principal downloaded health and safety transportation training into Google Classroom tracking and completing, for tracking and completion of assigned training. The director emailed the health and safety screener to the principal to complete by September 30th, and that was done. And we had our quarterly check-in on October 2nd. We have our meeting with the regional director October 20th, and I'm sure Ms. Miles can fill in the rest. But I did want to give you a broad overview of where we were in this process. It is going well. Ms. Miles and her team are doing excellent. Dr. McCarty is working hand-in-hand with them at Johnson Pre-K, and we feel very confident that we are going to receive a glowing review. Ms. Miles, if you are on, board members, are there any questions?
Good job, Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Rabinberg. And again, like I always do, I just can't say enough about the work that Ms. Miles does because she's very impressive, and the entire team, working with our youngest learners, they just constantly deliver results. So their health and safety is number one for us, and that's always what we work towards, so we appreciate them. And with that, I will go ahead and commence with, if there are no questions, I can go ahead with the regular liaison report. Okay, and you can see, same enrollment, 260 students, 83-year-olds, 129 four-year-olds. Seventy-two of those four-year-olds were returning. Couple of highlights for some of the things we've done this month. Health assessments began on 9/24 for Johnson students. We will be doing hearing assessments, vision assessments, brigands in heights and weights for all of our children who attend school. Resource bags will be given out to all students who attend, and Friday, parents who do not attend will be asked to pick up their child's resource bags. School Safety Committee currently meets twice a week, developing strategies for maintaining a safe and healthy environment for both students and staff. Virtual ongoing bus and healthy, health and safety training for bus monitors, August and September, will be happening via Google Classroom. And live face-to-face bus health and safety training in preparation for October 12, 2020, return of students. Bus monitors and drivers attended training on September 30, as we mentioned, as part of that quality improvement plan. And again, I always remind our board members that our monthly expenditure report looks a little funny because we are a month behind when we report, but you can see, as usual, we are green. We are right where we need to be in terms of our expenditures. And our monthly in-kind contributions, these are reflective of what the Pre-K program would pay for them, were they not donated by, or what our school would charge for them, were they not donated by our school system. It is a monthly report, and anybody who's ran a campaign or worked in government knows about in-kind contributions and how detailed we have to be when we cover those. So if there are any questions, I will be happy to answer them. Okay.
Always well presented. Thank you so much, and thank you, Ms. Miles.
Madam Chair, this concludes the Head Start Liaison Report for the month of October.
Thank you very much. Moving along to administrative personnel. Dr. Faust.
I'd ask that the board approve the recommended candidate for Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources.
Is there a motion? Motion to approve, do I need to, do I need to do the name? Ms. Dieter?
Yes, I think you can. You know, it's not, yes.
All right. Motion to approve, Ms. Coker?
Doctor.
Dr. Coker?
An enthusiastic second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right. Ms. Bowie?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer?
Aye.
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Rabinberg?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven to zero. We are excited to welcome Dr. Coker to the county. Look forward to that. All right. Next, Superintendent's Report, also, Dr. Faust.
Madam Chair, member of the board, as you know, we are celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month through October 15. The month of October is also National Bullying Prevention Month, Disability Employment Awareness Month, and National Principals Month. The week of October 19, we are also recognizing National School Bus Safety Week. As students return to our schools on October 12, senior staff and I will be visiting buildings throughout the entire week. We will make a visit to every school in the district. I'd like to recognize the work of all the district employees in preparing to welcome students back into our buildings next week. As you heard during the update, buildings are clean and set up for social distancing. Teachers have been preparing for the AABB schedule, and bus routes will be shared with families tomorrow. Meals continue to be served to the children in our communities, exceeding 1 million meals served last week. There's a tremendous amount of work being done to support our students' health, safety, and return to in-person instruction, and our employees are to be commended for their dedication. The district held four town hall meetings last week to answer staff and community questions about instruction, operation, and services under Plan B. The first was for employees, followed by events for elementary families, middle and high school families, and our Hispanic families. Sessions were livestreamed and broadcast on Facebook Live with participation ranging from several hundred to over 800 each night. Thank you. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have.
Guess just the only question is, you're about four weeks in. How are you, how are you holding up?
We're good. It's like, we're built for this.
Well, it's been a busy month, and we thank you for your leadership, and thank you for those updates.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the board? Discussion or comments? All right. Next, Board Chair Porson's report. I have none this evening. Committee reports. I don't believe we have any committee reports this evening, but I would like to say that next month, as we get ready to transition the board after the election, I think it's a good time to talk about where our committees are, so I would encourage all board-level committees to be prepared to present a very high-level, just information about maybe what you have accomplished this past year, what you're hoping to accomplish next year, to share with the community, because our committees have been working diligently on many projects. And so to hear some of those updates will be very helpful. All right. Consensus items, personnel. Again, Dr. Faust.
The recommendation is to approve the personnel updated list as presented.
All right. Is there a motion to recommend the approved updated personnel list?
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Bowyer, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Eastep. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer?
Aye.
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Rabinberg?
We'll go ahead. Personnel report approved, six, zero. All right. Old business, policies for second reading. Mr. Bowyer?
And again, Madam Chair, just as with the first reading policies, I asked board members to go ahead and single out policies that they thought were, you know, worthy of further debate and discussion. Having received no feedback, I would ask for a motion to once again pass these policies en masse. And I would remind the public that we are in the middle of an NCSBA policy update, and so as we move forward over the next 18 months or so, you can anticipate a heavy load of
Motion to approve the policies as presented? All right. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer?
Aye.
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Rabinberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Motion passes. New business, capital outlay budget transfer. Is this Mary Hazel?
Tonight, I'm requesting the board's approval of a transfer of $25,000 from bond contingency to the HVAC control improvement project. The funds are needed to cover the cost for the Rachel Freeman project when the bids came in a little bit over, so.
Great. You have heard the recommendation, approval of transfer funds. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Bowyer. Is there a second?
Second, Judy Justice.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer?
Aye.
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Rabinberg?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. All right. Next, agenda item, memorandum of understanding with CFCC, Interpreter Ed Program, and this is for Ms. Barnum, please.
Hi again. This first one here, this MOU, it is recommended for approval. This MOU outlines the agreement for supporting Cape Fear Community College student interns from the Interpreter Education Program, and mainly providing support- and mainly providing support for those students by incorporating them into our services for students with hearing impairments.
Recommendation for approval. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve. Mr. Bowyer?
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Eastep. Any discussion? All right. Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer?
Aye.
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Rabinberg?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. And are you staying up here for the next one as well? All right. Next item is the memorandum of understanding with communities and schools of Cape Fear. Ms. Barnum?
Yes. This agreement outlines our coordinated relationship with communities and schools of Cape Fear in seven of our schools, Alderman, Forest Hills, Freeman, Wrightsboro, Snipes, Williston, and Hanover. And the communities and schools model is really built upon empowering students and decreasing the risk for dropout, but doing that through cultivating relationships through a site-based coordinator in each building. And we certainly see the increase in overall student outcomes, whether it's academic, engagement, social, emotional, and we certainly want to continue with this partnership. So we ask that you approve this.
All right. You have heard the information and the recommendation. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Judy Justice.
All right. We have, sorry, a motion.
Second.
Second with Mr. Bowyer. Any other discussion? Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer?
Aye.
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
And Bill Rabinberg?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the December regular board meeting. The current board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, December first, and due to this election year being what it is, there's been some discussion about possibly pushing that back until the Board of Elections has certified the winners. So wanted to open that conversation up, if the board would be open to moving it back, or pushing it back a week to December eighth or other date.
Sense. Makes total sense.
I'd also point out that the county commissioners, the newly elected commissioners will be sworn in on December first. Or I'm sorry, the day before. They'll be sworn in on the last day of. So it gives a little time in between, depending on what happens with Mr. Rabinberg.
Okay. Great.
What about the certification? When are they, what's the date to certify that you're aware of?
The, I'm not sure about the exact date from the Board of Elections. I know that given the uncertainty with mail-in ballots this year, you know, there could be a little bit of a time lag, obviously, between November third. All of our votes have to be counted, and all issues have to be decided by, I believe, the Safe Harbor deadline for the presidential election is December eighth, and I think we have to be done by that date as well. Of course, lawsuits at the local level can extend out a little bit further, but I believe that's the intent, is to be done by December eighth with all ballots.
Think you're asking for having the meeting on the eighth?
Well, that'd be a worst-case scenario, I think.
Okay, I'm just saying, I'm just finding out information.
All right. So is there, do we need, Ms. Agner, do we need to vote on this?
I think that you had previously voted. I mean, it's, I don't believe it's required, but I believe that's what the board has done in the past.
Okay. So we'll go ahead, we'll take a vote. Is there a motion to move the December first board meeting to Tuesday, December eighth, two thousand and twenty?
So moved.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bowyer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Eastep. And any other discussion? Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer?
Aye.
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Rabinberg?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion passes. Meeting is moved.
Sorry to the remaining board members. One more week.
All right. Next on the agenda is correspondence. We are actually, we missed to call in, call to the audience earlier this evening. They had called in and recorded messages but had not signed up on the online form. So we want to rectify that now, and so we'd like to play those two messages, if that's okay, if the, if the board is all right with that. How about for our remote board members? Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
That's fine.
All right. Thank you. Bowie?
Our remote call to the audience is by Hazel Isles.
Hi, my name is Hazel Isles, and I'm in seventh grade. I oppose the idea of making students sit through six to seven hours of Zoom in school day. It is just not practical. We as students need flexibility in our workday. I feel that a good solution to this problem could be making our current Zoom schedule into our in-person schedule. It would be great for us to have some consistency and not be as stressed. We have already faced so many changes. Can't you just give us a second to breathe and adjust to Plan B by keeping our current schedule? I care about my education and grades, and I feel that I have been challenged academically during remote learning. My grades are very good, and I'm learning new things every week. When our class does poorly on a test, our teachers dedicate half of our Zoom meetings into fixing those problems and learning what we did wrong. I worry that if my classes are short...
Disappearing for me. Is everybody else hearing her?
Yes.
No.
...this level of support.
Hey, goodness, not me alone. Yeah, I cannot hear her.
Please, in seventh grade, I oppose the idea of making students sit through six to seven hours of Zoom in school day. It is just not practical. We as students...
And I think they got us muted while she's talking.
Hi, my name is Hazel Isles, and I'm in seventh grade. Hi, my name is, hi, my, hi, my name is Hazel Isles.
I think the Zoom is, the Zoom is muted.
Yeah, we couldn't hear her.
We're, we're working on it. Thank you. Is it possible to put the mic to the computer?
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh. Is it possible that we just...
I'm not hearing any, or I'm not hearing anything.
Is it possible that we play it just in here and...
For the people at home.
Right, for the people at home to hear. And then, board members, if you're unable to hear it over Zoom, when this posts, if we can just get the timeline of what time these are being posted, to be able to move it forward to go to the messages. The first one was from a student, and she's discussing the block schedule for middle school.
Have you both played?
No, just the, just the first one.
Would you like for me to repeat the first one?
If you, sure. Yeah.
Well, if we can hear it. Don't, don't play it again, or we can't hear it again.
Then no.
Okay. All right. So now the second one.
Second one, sure.
Okay. The second call to the audience is from Sandy Isles.
Hi, my name is Sandy Isles, and I'm very concerned about the district's decision to abandon the block schedule for middle school students. As of Sunday, we have had over five hundred signatures on our petition and over forty-eight individual comments within twenty-four hours of posting. Parents and teachers overwhelmingly support continuing the block schedule, not to mention the hundreds of comments on the town hall live feed. Why did the district go against teacher and school administrator recommendations to continue with the block schedule? Reasons for supporting this schedule include providing consistency from Plan C to B, concerns about increased screen time, providing equitable education for all, concerns regarding safety of hundreds of students transitioning classes in crowded halls six-plus times a day, the frequency of classroom cleaning, and so on. The district has not been transparent on why they made this decision, and the community deserves to know how decisions are made as related to our children's education. The district keeps talking about a flipped classroom, and from my understanding, teachers have been instructed to give higher-level content to their in-person students and lower-level content to those who are remote. For students who are a hundred percent remote, how will they receive higher-level instruction which teaches critical thinking and problem-solving skills? How will my AIG student receive both sides of the flipped classroom if she remains one hundred percent remote? It's not equitable to deny remote students access to the same curriculum and higher-level content as their in-person peers. Why is the district prioritizing in-person students over their remote students? And not just for AIG students, but the district has not explained how their EC students, who may not be able to return back to school, will be served. This increased class schedule will hurt all students academically. I'm also very concerned about the district's push to bully parents into the virtual academy. We all know edgenuity is not an equitable or adequate curriculum for all students. We know that edgenuity is a platform based on rote learning and is a low-level curriculum. Edgenuity grades on an algorithm and does not actually facilitate learning. You know this, yet. You continue to bully parents into accepting this inferior curriculum. Seems the district is more concerned about justifying the high cost of this program than they are in actually educating students. Our students and teachers deserve better. Our children do not deserve to be pushed into Zoom meetings from eight-thirty to three-thirty daily. No adult would thrive in that environment, much less eleven- to fourteen-year-olds. And this does not even include the classwork they will need to complete once the school day has ended. Our students and teachers deserve better, and we expect the district to do better.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any, oh, yes.
Yeah, well, I never did hear, but I will listen if you send us a link.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Justice.
I would like to ask Dr. Faust, for those participants who had questions when they called to us, how would they be answered? And if it's through emails, did the board receive a copy of those responses?
Thank you. I would like to see.
From the earlier call to the audience, the people that provided questions.
We would have to go back and listen and provide a response. However, I think in our presentation, we did answer their questions, but we can go back and make sure that we give them a written response, if that's, with the pleasure of the board.
Please.
Well, if they were answered during the presentation, then I'm sure they were listening. But if we missed an answer, we'd like to make sure that their questions were answered.
Okay. Okay. We will definitely do that. We will, I will have members go back and listen to make sure, and if not, we will send the response out, and definitely I'll, I'll copy the board on that.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Is there any other correspondence that any board member would like to share?
Just really briefly, you know, our students will be returning next week, and so I just wanted to take the time. If some are studious enough to watch a board meeting, you know, please, and parents, please, we are a team. We really need you to work with our students, work with your children, and make sure that when they do come back in, they're following the rules so that we can do this and do this effectively. I'm very excited to have them back. I know everybody's want to give the hugs and do all that stuff, but, you know, we, we just have to be responsible together, so that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, the next agenda item is announcements. The Policy Committee meeting on Tues, will be on Tuesday, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, at nine AM in the BOE Center. The Title IX Policy Committee will meet on Monday, October nineteenth, at three-thirty PM in the Board of Education Center, and the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee will be held on October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, at five PM. And next item is closed session. I do not believe that we have a need for that this evening. So that brings us to adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Is there a second?
I was about to second it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Any discussion? All right. Ms. Bowie?
Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. Wartman?
Aye.
Mr. Bowyer?
Aye.
Ms. Eastep?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
And Mr. Rabinberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned.